I'm gonna call the Wednesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Maybe have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Roof.
Here.
Ms. Yuchman?
Here.
Mr. Welch?
Here.
Mr. Warmrun. Ms. Chester. Mr. Cho and Ms. McLaughlin.
We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Believe all board members should have received in their packet of approve, excuse me, the minutes of the December, the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes or or are there any corrections to those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as submitted.
It's been. And now seconded. Again, can we uh call that for approval?
Yes, uh, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Roof?
Yes.
Ms. Yuchman?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes, the minutes are approved. Are there any communications, Cat?
Yes, and those were sent out to you guys earlier in the day today. Um, I can summarize the four that I received uh for Mr. Huber's case, and then I'll let Nick summarize the few that he received for uh Joy Owen's conditional use permit case. Um, I received four letters of support for Mr. Huber's major variance for on accessory parking space in the required front yard. Um, there was nothing really of substance beyond just support for the variance. Um, one of the um or one of the people who submitted public input had also mentioned that there are issues um in other parts of the neighborhood with parking in a required front yard. Um, so we've cited that as a zoning violation and we'll follow up on that, but that's about it as far as public input goes for my case.
All right. Are there any continued public hearings?
Oh, wait, Harvey, let Nick uh summarize his real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Um, yeah, so for my case, I received um two public comments, one of which would have gone out with the packet last week. Um, that one was opposed to granting the conditional use permit. Um, generally, the um summary would be that um they felt that granting this conditional use permit would lead to further multifamily uh developments in the neighborhood, which uh the commenter thought would alter the character of the neighborhood. And then uh this week, which would have gone out today, I received a comment um concerned about the effect of a multifamily property on property values in the neighborhood. Um, and yeah, so that's all I got for this case.
All right, thank you. Again, are there any continued public hearings, Cat?
There are none.
Then at this time, I will call for a hearing ZBA twenty twenty-two dash major dash oh one. A request by David Huber for a major variance to allow an accessory parking space in the required twenty-five-foot front yard at six oh one East Washington Street in the R three single and two-family residential zoning district. We have, do we have a staff report?
Yes. Uh, this is a request by David Huber for a major variance to allow an accessory parking space in the required front yard at six oh one East Washington Street. Staff finds that the case does not meet the variance criteria and recommends that the zoning board of appeals deny the request. Uh, as I just said, uh, we received four letters of public input prior to the meeting. Uh, they were sent out to you all earlier today. This is a zoning map of the property. Uh, it's located on the south side of Washington Street, west of Philo Road. Uh, and the applicant purchased the property in twenty twenty. There's an attached one-car garage and an eight-foot-wide access drive that provide a combined three stacked parking spaces on the property. Um, in addition, the applicant installed a gravel accessory parking space in December of twenty twenty, unaware of the zoning ordinance language prohibiting prohibiting parking in a required front yard. He now requests a variance to pave that accessory parking area to add additional parking and a turnaround space on the property. This is a zoning map of the property. It's zone R three, single and two-family residential. Um, to the northeast and west, uh, the properties are also zoned R three, and the adjacent parcels to the south are zoned R five, medium-high-density, multiple-family residential. All adjacent properties are residential. This is a site photo of the property. Um, you can see the accessory parking space as well as the existing garage. Uh, this access drive on the property is adjacent to the neighboring um access drive, as you can see in the photo. The applicant requests a variance to add additional parking and a turnaround area on his property uh shown here. Uh, the parking space runs along the sidewalk on East Washington Street. And since the accessory parking space is um not permitted in the required front yard, a variance is required. This is an aerial shot showing the properties along the east or the north and south sides of this block of Washington. On-street parking was removed from East Washington Street in twenty-ten. However, the applicant purchased the property in twenty-twenty, so he was aware of the existing parking configuration on-site when he purchased it. Uh, the lot is more narrow than what is currently required by the zoning ordinance. It's fifty-two feet wide, where sixty feet would now be required. Um, however, the access drive runs through the side yard and pro- um provides access to the rear yard and the garage. The applicant cites the location of an oak tree uh in his application and the site plan as a reason for the variance to be granted. However, the oak tree is also in a required front yard, um, or in the required front yard. It does not interfere with the possible locations for the access drive or parking configurations, as they would not be permitted in the location of the oak tree without a variance uh because it's in the required front yard. The applicant could reasonably create accessory parking and a turnaround space in a rear yard if the garage were removed. This is the site plan for the accessory parking space. It's shown here in blue. Um, the accessory parking area would be paved to the front property line and encroached twenty-five feet into the twenty-five-foot required front yard. Um, it would have bought the sidewalk on the north side of the property, as you can see here. No other houses along this block of Washington have accessory parking in the required front yard. Uh, three houses have a space to turn around on their lots, but it is all in the rear yard behind the front face of the house. Got a few more site photos as well. Allowing the accessory parking space in its current location does not seem necessary and could be seen as a special privilege since other lots along Washington share similar characteristics but do not have parking in the required front yard. The variance would also allow the essential char- or would also alter the essential character of the neighborhood by allowing parking in the required front yard right next to the sidewalk. Staff finds that the variance does not meet the variance criteria uh and therefore recommends denial of the request. This is the accessory parking space as it exists now. Uh, just to note, it would be required to be paved if it, the variance were approved um as gravel cannot be used as an approved surface for accessory parking. It would have to be um either paved with concrete or asphalt. They're also an acceptable surface. This is a photo of the car uh on the parking space as it exists. I'll summarize a few of the variance criteria. Um, there's access to the rear yard where additional parking and a turnaround space could be added, so the variance would serve as a special privilege. No other properties along the block have parking in the re- in the front yard, and the accessory parking space changes the appearance of the house and the lot, so it alters the essential character of the neighborhood. A car parked in the accessory parking space uh as shown here would be adjacent to the sidewalk and would have headlights and taillights pointed at neigh- neighboring properties to the east and west and pointed directly down the sidewalk, which could be a nuisance to people walking by. I will note that there is a fence that Mr. Huber has installed, so that provides partial screening. However, uh, front yard or fences in required front yards um in the city of Urbana are required to be fifty percent transparent, uh, so it does not provide complete screening. The accessory parking area is also located as far into the front yard as possible, so the variance does not represent the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance's requirements. Uh, the oak tree would need to be removed for the accessory parking space to be located further from the front property line, but a variance would still be required as it would still be located in the required front yard. And you can see the oak tree in this location as well. Although, I guess, um, I want to take a moment to note the uh notification requirements that we are required to do for um zoning board cases, rezoning cases, things like that. Um, as this would also go to city council, um, we're trying to make an active effort to uh notify boards and commissions and city council of the outreach that we do for these uh cases. Just to make you all aware, uh, staff published a legal ad in the News Gazette to notify the public of the request and a public hearing fifteen days prior to the zoning board of appeals. Staff also sent letters to four group forty neighboring property owners notifying them of the request and posted a public hearing sign on the property. We received four letters of public input. Those were sent out to you, and I think we've talked about those enough. Um, so we'll move on to recommendations. The zoning board of appeals has the following options on the requested major variance. Forward this case to city council with a recommendation of approval or the case to city council with the recommendation to approve of the variance with certain terms and conditions or deny the variance. Um, I will note that because this is a major variance, um, it would require a two-thirds majority vote to be forwarded to city council. Without a two-thirds majority vote, uh, it would be denied, and it would not go to city council. It would be killed at zoning board. Um, staff is recommending denial of their request really for the reasons outlined in the staff report. Um, and because the case does not meet the uh major variance criteria. Mr. Huber is also available tonight to take questions uh and make a statement as the applicant, and I can take any questions for staff.
Thank you, Cat. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none. Um, at this time, um, am I gonna extend an opportunity for the applicant or anyone in his behalf to speak in support of their request? Mr. Huber, I believe you do wanna, you do wanna speak? You need to unmute yourself. Now I have to swear you in.
Yep. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes. Do you swear that any testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
All right, you may proceed, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So why does this exist? I think that's the uh core uh of um the issue here for me. Uh, it, you're right, it doesn't need to exist. Uh, it exists uh essentially to provide a convenience uh due to the lack of street parking and due to the uh situation where the closest street parking is across um Washington Street, uh, across Grove. Uh, so, or going down to Anderson. Um, so there, there's not uh off-street parking, or sorry, off-site parking. Uh, that's very convenient. Uh, and so what it does is allow two cars um to coexist in a way that doesn't require one of them to be backed out um if it's a stacked configuration. So it is not inherently parking that has to be used. Uh, this is a rental property. That is my business, um, and it was designed as such. It's a deficit of the properties on the streets that um the parking is limited. As you know, um, and I grew up in a house with stacked parking, inevitably, one car often ends up on the street uh to avoid having to back out uh to allow a car that's deeper um inside the stack to exit. Um, that is not an option here, uh, is lease parking directly on the street in front. Uh, neighbors do that regularly. They um so there, there is off uh off-site parking that occurs, but it occurs on Grove sometimes. There's not a crosswalk or any way of actually safely crossing that street uh to get back over to the south side of Washington Street. Um, and it is a means of turning around if necessary. Uh, and again, this is for, this was designed with a speculative user in mind. Um, meaning this doesn't stem from uh a specific case uh of someone, you know, finding this configuration difficult, but acknowledging that uh it is a deficit of houses on this street um and that the parking uh situation did change as a result of adding the bike lane circa two thousand ten, I believe. Um, so from my perspective, it is largely a matter of creating the convenience that is uh commensurate with being able to uh overhaul homes like this, which I have four on this street. I have agreements to buy two more on this street. Why do I continue to do that on this street? Uh, because there are certain deficits, so that, of course, is an opportunity in a certain way. But uh there is a, another reason is there is a large number of unoccupied houses. And this goes for, I'd say, maybe Urbana generally, but I can speak to uh east of Vine, meaning houses where the property taxes are paid, lawns mowed, no one lives there. Um, one of these two properties I'll be buying in the future, no one has lived there for ten years. Uh, another property, no one has lived there for decades. Um, why is it that these house, why isn't the market allowing these houses to be sold? Uh, renovated, et cetera. Uh, there's street noise, there is a severe traffic issue on the street. Some of those can be resolved by the renovation of the properties where you insulate them and uh new windows, et cetera, but one of these other deficits is the um difficulty of parking and maneuvering um a vehicle on and off that street. Uh, to the point of, you know, can someone just park off-site? It should be noted in the record of the Urbana Police Department that in the fall of this year, my car was covered in dog poop three days in a row for parking in front of someone's house uh when my driveway on Washington Street was being installed, and thus a car couldn't be parked there. That person or another person went so far as to call the traffic enforcement. The traffic enforcement came to my house, so of course the person knew whose car it was, and said, "You're allowed to park there. The person just doesn't want you to park there." Um, so I think we all know there are politics surrounding who parks where and the idea that any, you know, well, if someone doesn't want to park in a stacked situation, they just go around the street and park um over there. Uh, well, eh, that, um, you know, has different outcomes. So the last thing I would say is to the point of this being uh, you know, how do we make it viable to bring houses that are unoccupied onto the market or made uh livable? Uh, brought up to a standard that is um, you know, in terms of safety, in terms of comfort, in terms of desirability on infill existing developments like this. Uh, we're dealing with a situation where the planning ordinance was superimposed on a neighborhood of great heterogeneity. That's another reason why I continue to pursue projects on this street. Uh, this is not a situation of of uh deep consistency à la uh West Urbana, where the houses range from a very narrow period of time. There are houses that were moved to the street in the twenties from farm sites. Uh, there are houses from the thirties, forties, fifty, et cetera. There is not a kind of historical consistency in that way, uh, but also certain deviations from planning as a result of them existing then. So, uh, I would hope that um in an effort to, you know, eh, take into account that there are circumstances that change, such as the elimination of street parking over time in order, you know, for the purposes of some greater good for the city, which is a bike network, uh, that you know, and you're right, I bought the property after the elimination of um that parking. But it is a historical circumstance. A choice was made uh by the city. Um, and there was a certain loss to homes on Washington Street. Um, so that is all to say that the idea of the, the kind of historical uh character or the character, you know, this is an evolving thing, uh, and I hope that um there's an acknowledgement of um, you know, a further kind of evolution uh to these properties in order to, you know, uh thrive, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Is any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Huber?
Um, I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Adam.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Huber, um, how did this uh situation that you, how did you learn about the situation that this was not allowed? Was, were you notified of this, if you don't mind me asking, or was?
Yeah, 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 eh, I was notified by this staff member of the city. So it existed for about a year, and that was actually a point I meant to mention in my comments. Uh, eh, the fact that it, now, I guess this is a legally dubious argument, the fact that it uh happened to you know, exist for a year before it was caught. And, but the point is that the vehicle doesn't park there regularly. It's not a car that is not used, et cetera. Uh, and I understand that the variance is, is, you know, put on a deed or uh recorded. It exists beyond my uh owning the property, but it is a commercial, well, it's a rental property, meaning it's a property that I own. There's tenants, and I could actually revoke that parking um use uh as the owner of it. Um, say, if someone had a very large vehicle, uh, it wouldn't work. Um, so to answer your question, yeah, it was a um yeah, and, and eh, you know, planning is a gray, can be a kind of gray uh thing versus other forms of codes like uh fire safety and so on. And there are various rules about maximum widths to driveways and to driveway approaches, et cetera. So when this was constructed, it was actually the, the, the width of it in total is falls within the maximum um allowable width of a driveway. Um, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Is it, yeah, so in breadth, it is no wider than what, if that weren't a front yard uh would be allowed, um, Cat can um correct me on this. I believe it's like forty-three percent or something of the uh width of the lot.
Yes, uh, forty-five percent of the width of the lot. The writing on the access drive definitions and descriptions is, is the furthest thing from clear. But for an access drive to be considered an access drive, it needs to access a parking space that is in a legal spot on a property. So because this is in a required front yard, it's not a legal parking space. If the parking, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, and I was just gonna ask, um, so I under- I understand the part about parking, and I'll just ask this real follow-up real quick of staff. Uh, Cat, if you can answer, uh, and then I'll let Nancy ask her question. Um, if this is, is the prob- is there a problem with gravel being there? Or is it, um, would he have to remove the gravel, or is there just a problem if there's a car parked there?
That's a good question. Uh, and we went back and forth on this quite a bit at the staff level. Because it is functionally a parking space, it will be used as a parking space. So I think if the variance is not approved, I would imagine that we would require the, the gravel to be removed. Otherwise, if you leave gravel there as a parking space, it will functionally be used as what it is.
I'm, I'm wondering if it would have to be used as a parking space if it would not be just a term, eh, a positioning space if people were to be moving their cars in the stack but wanting to pull in and out without having to pull onto the busy street, if that would be an option. I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud.
I think, yeah, I, I have difficulty with that because if you, if you open the door for that and then a car is parked there, then it is, you know, again, being used as a parking. Um, can you also hear me okay? Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, you're back, yeah.
Sorry. I've had internet issues lately. Um, but what I was getting at was if you leave the gravel space there and a car is ultimately parked in that space, it, it is a parking space. Um, I guess we could write zoning violations to that effect. Um, I'm not sure if I'm answering this very well.
No, I, I, I get what you're saying.
Cat, could I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Uh, you rate, thank you. Uh, you raised something actually that I didn't realize uh was a specific thing to the planning ordinance, because uh gravel of a certain size or grade, I believe CA ten, which is a technical term for the size of the gravel, is permitted as an, or is it considered an approved surface for parking um in the city of Urbana.
Yes.
Uh, and we've addressed this before, you and I, about another situation, needs to be contained at the edge in order, and it, you know, it can't stir up uh dust, I guess, those being, but is it that the, an accessory spot cannot be that same gravel?
Right, yeah, and you know what, you're, you're tugging on my uh memory of this. There is, there, it's written into the zoning ordinance in a way that if it is, you can have an accessory parking space that is an approved surface, and it, CA ten may be approved for an accessory parking space. I might be able to pull that up quickly.
And to, to the committee, that current gravel is not a CA ten. Um, so even, even if this uh gravel, CA ten is allowed, uh, is it approved surface, that gravel type would have to change? So, yeah, with, with further clarification, it may or may not be allowed to be gravel, but it could be a gravel, possibly gravel in some form, even if it is a, an approved accessory parking space, perhaps.
If you're correct, I just, I just pulled that up in the zoning ordinance. Um, the technical uh phrasing of it is the parking surface of an accessory off-street parking space for, you know, numerous vehicles can be brick, concrete, asphalt, or CA ten, um, gravel or an equivalent gravel. So that is the correct information.
Nancy, did you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead. You muted, Nan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Huber, you have other properties on Washington Street? Are you planning to request a variance for these other properties to increase parking spaces?
No, uh, two of the current four that I own are on corner lots. Um, where the parking is accessed on the side street. So actually, they're both Weber Street. Um, so, and, and the access is, is, that's one thing, but also that there exists on those side streets um off-site parking or street parking. Um, and uh, so, no, this is a particular um circumstance. Uh, I, I, I don't want to keep going, but the one other thing that I didn't mention is, and it's a complicated thing uh as far as what is or isn't allowed, but there is also the existence of a, of a storm sewer in front of the house, adjacent to the current um driveway approach. So if that driveway approach were to be modified, uh, i- it would require the modification of that storm. that storm sewer. Um, meaning if there was a way to widen the driveway uh, to make a wider driveway or something, that would require the ramp, the driveway approach to be uh, modified and that's difficult in this particular situation.
And uh, I noticed you have a garage in the back, which is not enclosed. Have you considered taking down the garage and having, you could park four or five cars back there?
Um.
I know that would be an expense, but.
No, it's not actually the expense, and if you give me thirty seconds, uh, this house happened to, happens to be very beloved. Uh, and part of why I think it is successful as a design is because it is building upon a certain history. That history is that this house is a whatever kit home from the nineteen forty-seven, I believe, five or something. However, there was a landscape architecture graduate student in the seventies who lived there and who renovated the house. At that time, he applied certain treatments that you might call mid-century modern to this house, vertical cedar siding that still exists, uh, uh, dry stacked or laid uh, brick pavers that, you know, motifs or elements that were uh, elaborated in the current renovation. With the landscape, he planted a substantial number of trees in, on the property, uh, but particularly in the rear yard. And he is also the person who built, uh, and because we know this because he etched his name in the concrete of this carport, which I would call it, this is, it's unenclosed. Uh, he planted a very wide uh, array of trees, including what is now a sassafras grove uh, that exists around this carport. Um, uh, there are, my landscaper could uh, enumerate the different species of trees that exist, but it is quite a, it is the most um, uh, unique aspect of this property. And because it, it abuts uh, this large property to the south, there's no house to the rear, so you get a kind of view through these trees out to this. So uh, no, the cost is not uh, the hurdle to that. It is the fact that there exists many trees of high value as uh, landscapers would call them. Um, so, it, that, that is the difficulty um, uh, of that reconfiguration.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant or for staff based on what has been said so far? All right. Are there, is there anyone um, who wants to be heard in favor of the application? Is there anyone online that wishes to be heard in opposition to Mr. Huber's uh, variance request? All right, they're hearing none. Uh, are there any additional questions or are we ready to call the question? All right, hearing no additional questions, is there, is there a motion to be made?
Ask the question.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Um, this is for staff, I guess. Uh, given that this kind of lot layout and design is not necessarily unique to the street, um, have there been other similar requests as this? I um, I, like, I want to provide this option for this particular homeowner while at the same time acknowledging that, you know, we don't want parking in the front of the houses on the street. Um, I know the situation is unique, so I'm just wondering if this is an issue that has come up before um, with adjacent homes. There's, I mean, we've also heard support from neighbors in this particular area, so I'm just curious if this issue has come up before in this particular location.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we have not received very many accessory parking variance requests in general. Um, and to the best of my knowledge, there have been none received for properties on Washington other than this one. Um, that's, you know, pretty much the extent of, of uh, context I can give.
Could I ask a question of staff?
Um, yes, go ahead.
Uh, and, and it's really not actually, it, it's the further we talk about it, the more it, I feel confident of certain understanding of the, of the, of the ordinance and, and then become less confident um, as we're talking about it. Uh, i, is there a, when is a driveway in a required front yard? Um, and we've sort of talked about this, uh, because parking is allowed in the space between the street and the house, but when is it not? Assuming it uh, it, it, the property meets the open space requirements, doesn't exceed the maximum width of the driveway, um, and so on. I mean, because obviously a house with a two-car garage on the front of it can have, um, well, it would have two parking spots inside the garage, then are those, is that why it's not considered parking? Even though cars could park in front of their garage?
Yes, so, uh, that's a great question and I'm happy to provide clarification where I can. An accessory or a, an access drive is a driveway that is accessing a legal parking space. So a parking space that is not in a required front yard. Parking is required or is permitted in required side and rear yards. So you can park behind the front face of the house, which is always a hotly contested question. Um, but you can't park in the required front yard if you're not accessing a legal parking space. So in your case, you have a one-car, we'll, we'll call it a carport, um, where that is the legal parking space and your access drive accesses that parking space in the carport, but it also accesses space behind the front face of the house where you could legally park cars. So even without the garage, so if you remove the garage and you have a, an access drive that runs from the street to the back of the lot, you can park along that because it's accessing parking that is not in a required front yard. It's a little tricky because of the terminology and the way that yards are, are defined and described, but because this parking space is in a front yard, not on an access drive that's accessing a legal parking space, that's what makes it an accessory parking space and it is in a required front yard, so it's not a legal parking space. Does that make sense?
I think so, yes. All right. Again, does anyone have any other questions for either Mr. Huber or for staff? Hearing none. Are we ready to call the question then? Is there any um, actions to be taken in regards to making any motions?
I move to appro, I, go ahead. Well, I'm not sure. What are you thinking, Ashley? If I can ask you.
I'm pretty conflicted. It does feel like a privilege. Um, even though obviously every site is unique and there's always reasons to like, make exceptions, um.
If I can ask you, Kat, it sounds to me like currently this is not a legal parking space. So the fact that there is um, some, some gravel there that is covering the front yard, the fact that there's a fence there, um, doesn't mean that's a parking space, but it's been installed by the property owner. Um, if this is denied, would the city staff actually have to move to have that spot removed? Um, that, I should say that landscaping removed? Or is this a situation where so long as nobody actually parks there and um, maybe it gets used for turning around, maybe it's just used for people sitting up, setting up a picnic, I don't know? Um, then um, we're all in, you know, we, it is denied, things go back to normal, they can use the driveway, um, but the property owner doesn't have to go to any expense of taking out anything that's been done to the property?
Right. Yeah, I think this is a strange scenario, um, mostly because it's already been installed. In a case where this variance were, were requested before it were installed and staff and the zoning board of appeals both recommended denial and then the zoning board denied it. Um, if gravel or a parking space were installed, I think we would require for it to be removed. Um, or if we were aware that a parking space were being installed, we would, you know, basically put a halt to it. Um, in this case, I think I would defer to Kevin's judgment on whether or not we would require the gravel to be physically removed. Um, I do know that if a parking, or if a car were parked in that space, it would be in violation of the zoning ordinance, parking in a required front yard. So fines would be issued in that sense. I think ultimately we would probably require for the space to be removed, um, although I understand your justification in, you know, financial and, you know, the, uh, the actual act of having to remove it is a burden, but it was installed without a variance as well.
So I have one quick follow-up to that. Uh, what, other than this application, what qualifies as a parking space if the gravel isn't technically an accepted parking surface?
Yeah.
I mean, zero escape, you know, people can use the landscape in their front yard or whatever, so.
Sure.
And I'm not trying to like, I mean, maybe I am trying to find a little bit of a loophole, given that, you know, everyone's kind of doing their best.
Yeah.
Situation work, within the parameters. Um, so anyway.
And I would just say, I could see a scenario where the property owner would want to have um, landscape stone there in the front yard, so that if people decide to use the front yard to be, to turn around when they're moving cars in the stack, that that would prevent the uh, erosion of soil. So that, that being said, I think that, I, I completely understand that if we deny this variance and a car parks there, that, that um, car will be levied with fines. That is, that is the proper way to do this. Um, but I don't necessarily see that um, this could be, this could not be considered um, landscaping um, in, as opposed to an accessory parking um, area, so long as the um, property owner understands that if we deny this um, request, then any car that parks there is in violation.
Yeah, I think to Ashley's earlier point, this is kind of acting as a privilege that a lot of other properties along this block don't have. So if other properties along the block put in gravel similar to this, we would call that an expansion of gravel parking and that's not allowed by the zoning ordinance as well. Um, there, that's not to say that you cannot have gravel in your front yard as a, as the landscaping surface. This is not a, an approved surface for a parking space and it's also an expansion of that parking area and turnaround area into the front yard as a privilege that, like Ashley said, lots of properties along this block don't have. And I, you know, back to the hammer, if someone put this in, if someone put that much gravel in their front yard to use as a turnaround space, that is still not in compliance with the zoning ordinance because it's kind of an expansion of their driveway.
So I, I'm sorry, could I ask another follow-up?
Yes, you, you certainly can.
This is probably silly, but uh, is there a distinction between like a turnaround space and a permanent parking space? Is that even a valid question?
No, it's a totally valid question. Um, to answer that, I think the answer is no, um, mostly because they're functionally the same. A turnaround space is, is a space for a car to be able to pull into in some capacity, turn around in and then pull out of. So reasonably speaking, it's probably the size of a car or large enough for a car to park in. So I think that's kind of where staff is at on this. It's a parking space because even if it's functionally a turnaround space, it has to be considered something and that's really what it is. Which, we also brought this, I mean, it's kind of similar to the Wees case in that sense, um, where he was looking for turnaround space and also parking and stuff like that. But a turnaround space is functionally a parking space, I guess is, is where we've landed.
Okay. Um, in, in that case, I think I'm ready to uh, make a motion and it can be um, debated or whatever. Um, in the case of ZBA twenty-twenty-two major oh-one, I move to approve the request for variance, provided that the um, proposed accessory parking generally conform to the site plan provided on page nine.
It's been so moved, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I was gonna ask Nancy about that.
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, sorry, Nancy waved, I thought maybe she was second.
I'm seconding it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? I'd, I believe then we're now ready to call this motion for a vote. Um, it, it will require three affirmative votes to be uh, sent on to the uh, city council for their consideration.
I believe.
I'm, what?
Two-thirds. Would that require four?
There are only four of us.
Five now, right? One, two, three, four. Nope, you're right, you're right.
So three out of four would be seventy-five percent, so.
Long day for me, Harvey.
All right. Would you, uh, roll, excuse me, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Rish.
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
No.
Ms. Yuckman?
No.
Mr. Welch?
I'm also no. That, that motion um, is denied for uh, lack of enough affirmative votes. Thank you, Mr. Huber.
Thank you.
Excuse me. It's, I'm, I call, I call for hearing ZBA dash twenty, dash twenty, excuse me, dash twenty-two, that's, excuse me.
Do I can start sharing my screen here?
Harvey, I'll take it.
C-dash oh-one. Request by Joy Owen for a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit at twenty-five oh-four Fieldcrest, Fieldcrest Drive located in the R-two single-family residential zoning district.
So can you all see my screen now?
Hey, real quick, before Nick gets started, I'll take a second to introduce him. I'm putting on my uh, Kevin principal planner hat to introduce Nick. He is our newest uh, member of the planning team. He um, was hired back in January and um, has been a great addition to our planning division so far. This is his first case, um, and we are really excited to have him, uh, so I will let him take it away.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Kat, I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to uh, meet you all. Um, so this is a request by Joy and Philip Owen for a conditional use permit to build an accessory dwelling unit at twenty-five oh-four Fieldcrest Drive in the R-two single-family zoning district. Um, as we get started, just for the public record, I'd like to clarify a slight mistake that was made in the initial staff report. Um, on the staff report that went out last week, it was stated that uh, one of the applicants, Joy Owen, is the homeowner of twenty-four, twenty-five oh-four Fieldcrest. that one of the applicants, Joy Owen, is the homeowner of 24, 2504 Fieldcrest Drive and that the proposed dwelling unit would be for her daughter. That is incorrect. Joy has since clarified that her father, Philip Owen, also listed as a co applicant on the application is the homeowner and that she would be residing in the proposed unit herself. But both Joy and Philip currently live at the property. As I said, they were listed as co applicants on the application and Philip Owen did provide his signature on the application as the homeowner. If approved, the correct information would be included on the decision report. Otherwise, the fundamentals of the case in the staff report remain unchanged. That said, staff finds that the case meets the criteria for a conditional use permit and recommends that the zoning board of appeals approve the request as submitted. The property 2504 Fieldcrest Drive is located in the Somerset subdivision south of Airport Road. This is in the northeastern portion of Urbana. It's located at the intersection of Fieldcrest Drive and Somerset Drive. The property itself is zoned R2 Single Family and it's neighbored on the northwest and south by other R2 Single Family residential properties and on the east by R1 Single Family residential property. Because the property is zoned R2 and the proposed additional unit would have bedroom, kitchen, bathroom space as well as an exterior door, it must definitionally be considered an accessory dwelling, an accessory dwelling unit, making the property a duplex, which is permitted in R2 with a conditional use permit. And here you can see the approximate area where the proposed addition would be. They proposed that it would be east of the garage here on the north side of the property and what is currently the north side yard of the property. It would be approximately 15 feet wide by 39 feet long or 585 square feet. I say approximately because the Owens planned to hire a surveyor to determine the setback for the side yard as required by the zoning ordinance precisely. But they haven't made that decision, measurement just yet. So there might be a little bit of wiggle room, but any final plans would require approval as part of the building permit process. As far as size of a lot required for a duplex by the zoning ordinance, this lot is 15,000 square feet and 107 feet wide approximately, which meets the minimum area and with requirements for a duplex as stated in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance also requires four parking spaces for a duplex, which the property would meet with its three car garage and additional space in the driveway. So here is a preliminary site plan. As you can see, doors entering the proposed unit would be in the property garage as well as on the north side of the proposed unit. The proposed unit with the width proposed would be coming pretty close to the required five foot side yard setback. As I mentioned, they plan on hiring a surveyor to determine that line. There would likely be a sidewalk for accessing the unit, but an access walk to enter the unit would be an allowed encroachment permitted by the zoning ordinance. So moving on to site photos, here you can see the property from the front. As you can see, you can't really see the proposed area behind the garage here from the street. So it would be a fairly inconspicuous location for an additional unit. And then here is the site of where the proposed unit itself would be. And from another angle here. And to summarize staff findings, we found that the application meets the requirements for the requested conditional use permit. The proposed unit would be residential in nature and it's something that wouldn't require a permit for the homeowner to do if it did not require that exterior door that it's been proposed with. And because the proposed use would be residential, comply with all zoning requirements for duplexes in the R2 district and be located inconspicuously, we find that it would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the surrounding district or public welfare. And as far as complying with the standards and regulations of the district, duplexes are permitted in the R2 zoning district with a conditional use permit. The other properties on the same street, Fieldcrest Drive, are also zoned R2 and the proposed addition would comply with the lot size, lot width, side yard setback and parking requirements laid out in the zoning ordinance. As such, we find that the proposed use would not alter the character of the district. So moving on, the zoning board of appeals has the following options in case ZBA 2022 C01. You may approve the conditional use as submitted, approve the conditional use along with additional conditions or requirements as are appropriate or necessary for public health, safety and welfare and to carry out the purposes of the zoning ordinance or deny the conditional use as submitted. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals approve the proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA 2022 C01 as submitted. I know that Joy or Philip Owen were planning on attending. I'm not sure if they made it on to the call. So if they are here, they can take any questions directly. Otherwise, I can take questions for staff.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Nancy.
Um, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Are we only, could this simply be an addition to the home? And is it before us because it will have an exterior entrance?
Yes, because it has an exterior door, it technically has to be considered an additional unit. So the property has to be considered a duplex prompting the conditional use permit request.
Are there additional questions for staff? Hearing none. Are the applicants, either of them on, online with us? They are? Oh, yes, I see. Do either of the Owens, Owenses want to be heard in favor of their application? Excuse me, their application? And if so, you'll have to unmute yourself and let me swear you in. Okay, you're unmuted. Do either of you wish to be heard, either of you Owenses?
We just arrived, so we don't know if there were, and if there were any issues that were raised that we need to address. This is Philip Owen, by the way.
I don't, there was one question asked about what requires the, this process and it's the exterior door, as I understand it, that requires this. And that was pretty much the extent of, of the question, that was the extent of the question, questions. And the report was pretty much as detailed in, in the staff report, written report. If you have nothing additional, you're not required to say anything additional. I will ask if any member of the board has any questions for any of, either of you. But if you, do you?
We have nothing additional to add.
Okay. Does, all right. You have a question, Nancy, for the?
Are there any objections from neighbors?
We'll get, we'll get to that. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants? No, all right. Is there anyone present online that wishes to be heard in favor of the Owenses' application? No. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in opposition to the Owenses' application? And that's you, Ms. Elston?
Hi, yes, this is Cindy Elston. I'm not, can you hear me?
Yes, if, if.
Oh, sorry, yes.
If you wish to speak, I have to swear you in.
Yes, please.
All right. I have no visuals, so I'm just gonna, you had your word that you're raising your hand. Ah, there you are. Raise your hand, please. Do you swear that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Thank you. You may speak.
I'm not, I'm Philip and Joy's neighbor, hello. I'm the 2506, so I'm right next door. And I'm not necessarily fully opposed, but I have a question and I have a concern.
What's your question for whom?
Probably for the staff.
All right, go ahead.
So one question is, if this became a duplex, it's still considered single family residence, correct? So it would not be rentable, it would not be able to be sold as a separate entity? Should there be a future homeowner who wanted to do that?
The unit would hypothetically be rentable in the future if either the Owens or a future property owner decided to put it up as a rental.
Okay, okay. All right, so then I guess I'm leaning more towards a house. My two concerns are that, that while that's not the current proposed use, that it could become a rental property in the future with a new homeowner. My other concern is, is simply just that external access. It's very close to my house and so there's, with a sidewalk there, I didn't realize there would be an external door until I looked at the materials today. And that's a lot of potentially could be traffic noise and I think could impact my property value in the future. And so that would be my concern as a pure addition. I completely have no issue with it, but that external door does concern me and the duplex that it could become as far as rental also concerns me.
Do you have anything else you would like to say, say, Ms. Elston?
No, that's all, thank you.
Does any member of the staff have any additional question for Ms. Elston? All right. Do the applicants wish to respond to the issues raised by Ms. Elston?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, then, let me, let me swear you in.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you swear that any testimony that you give tonight before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, sir.
You may go ahead, Ms. Owen.
Okay. So as far as it being hypothetically rentable in the future, I do, I do understand that concern. I guess the way, to be really blatantly honest, I plan to die in the addition. And when, when my parents who live in the existing structure don't reside there anymore, my hope is that my brother and his sister-in-law will move in. And so if it becomes sold and rentable, just, you know, just purely human reasoning, this is 40 years down the line. So maybe that still presents the concern if that happens 40 years down the line, but that's, that's like really honest to be with more or less a bunch of strangers. But there you go. The other thing on the exterior door is if, if we get the permit and we proceed, we'll definitely, we'll be maintaining setbacks, obviously. So, and I don't know if we would, so far, we haven't been able to get very far in discussions because we, as a minimum, need the permit. But I don't know that we would be pouring a sidewalk outside that door. There would be an entrance to the unit from our existing garage and that would be where 100% of the traffic mostly, okay, so 99% of the traffic would be, you know, I don't anticipate a lot of guests. It won't be a separate mailbox for sharing utilities like a standard addition. So it shouldn't generate typical sorts of traffic as if it were a standard duplex for, for the length of time I hope to be here.
And if I may, if I may add one thing as well.
This is Mr., well, you have, you have to be swearing in as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Owen, do you swear that any testimony that you give tonight before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, it will.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Owen.
I, I am sorry that we are, we are disturbing Cindy in any way. She's a wonderful neighbor and I'm, I'm not happy that she's concerned about it. I will, I will say this just to emphasize, there is a practical impediment to it being rented as a duplex and that is the fact that we will be sharing utilities. It's not, not impossible to, to sell as a duplex or rent as a duplex under those circumstances, but it is an impediment to that sort of thing. That's all I had to say.
I have a question. Is there going to be access between the two halves of this property without going outside?
Through, through the, there will be an access door from our, into our house through the garage. We have a door from our part of the house into the garage. We anticipate a door on the addition into the garage.
So this is Joy Owen, there wouldn't, there, there's access to the unit through the garage that's not through the exterior door.
All right, well, that, that's what I was asking as opposed to a standard duplex where the, there's not access from one unit to the other without going outside.
Yes, Adam. I can ask staff really quickly, if there was an access between the, the addition and the main part of the house that was direct and not going through the garage, would that require them to have a permit?
I believe so, but I can defer to Kat, who knows the zoning ordinance a little better than me.
That's optimistic of you. Yes, a conditional use permit would still be required. Given that there were access between the two units, they're two functionally independent units, which would make it duplex by definition.
Okay, got it. Because they have bathroom and kitchen and that sort of thing, I suppose.
Precisely, that's how a dwelling unit is defined. So that's kind of where the duplex definition comes from.
Okay, all right. Do you have a question, Ashley?
I do have a quick question. But again, the only reason we have to approve it is because of the exterior door, correct? Otherwise, it would just be an addition, even though it's not connected to the main house except through the garage. Okay. And then my other clarification is this duplex designation. I don't know how the utilities plays into this, but as a duplex, can it be sold independently of that house? And this designation?
No, because you.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, because utilities are shared, it couldn't be sold separately.
Okay. And then just lastly, this conditional use, because of our approval or because of the exterior door, is with the property owner, correct? is with the property owner, correct?
That's correct.
Are there any additional questions to any of our participants, Ms. Elston or the Owenses or the staff by any member of the board? All right. Are there any final comments? Ms. Elston, have, have all of your concerns been addressed?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Mr. Owen, Ms. Owen, you have anything additional you want to state to the, to the board in support of your request?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, then, we're ready to call the question. Anyone have a motion to make?
I will move that the zoning board approve the proposed conditional use in case ZBA twenty twenty-two C zero one.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Now, I've been seconded. Is there any additional discussion regarding the motion? And I believe we're ready to call this motion for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rish?
Yes.
Ms. Yuchman?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin? Mr. Welch?
Yes. That motion is appro, or excuse me, the motion is approved. And the conditional use permit is granted. Thank you to all the participants in our discussion. Is there any old business, Kat?
There is none.
Any new business?
Nope.
Other than our audience that has already participated, is there any additional audience participation? All right. Is there a staff report?
No.
Is there a study session?
No, there is not.
Having concluded then all the business on our agenda for tonight, I move that we adjourn.
Adjourned at eight seventeen PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys, for your time.